Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Noel, are you ready?
I need a Cache County Council on June 11th.
I guess we have to welcome everybody. We welcome you again. June 11th, Cache County Council. We appreciate you, all those that are, I guess, tuned in or here today. All of you. So, we appreciate your interest there. We'll go ahead and start. Our opening is by Councilmember Catherine Buse.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm going to talk a little bit about an upcoming event that is next week. And it's, yeah, next week, it's the June 20th, and it's World Refugee Day. And I would like to give a little bit of history lesson. As most of us know, Utah's history is linked to refugees. Many of us, including myself, have forefathers who have come here as refugees fleeing religious persecution 170, if I can do my math quickly-ish, years ago. And their descendants, including myself, have a deep understanding of the danger and pain caused by forced migration and appreciation for the wonderful contribution of refugees in our communities. Here in our county, refugees are being resettled from all over the world. And I've had the opportunity and the blessing to meet many of these people. They're good people. They are vetted by our government. They work hard and many times fill jobs that aren't, that others won't. And they integrate into the community and add very much to our culture and our community. And they want the very best for their families as much as we do. And we will be having an opportunity to celebrate this World Refugee Day next week at the Willow Park. And I encourage you, if you have time, to swing by to see the cultural events that they prepare from literally all over the world. We have Afghan refugees, we have Ukrainians, we have Eritreans, we have Somalians, we have Venezuelans, and Guatemalans. I'm missing so many Congolese. We, I can't even name all of them, but they're literally from all over the world. And it's a very rich event, and you come out very edified. And it's beautiful to celebrate their culture, but also see the amount of integration and the beauty that they bring to our culture. So I invite everyone that can to come and to celebrate together. And with that, I would also like to say the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded that we approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. We would like to actually excuse Carl Ward. I believe he's got some other obligations tonight. Also, how about the minutes from May 28th?
I approved them. I didn't see anything, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Carl's not here, nobody can make the original.
I'll second.
Move a second that we approve the minutes of May 28th. Is there any discussion? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous there. We'll now have the report of the County Executive.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm passing down right now some budget calendars. And I just met with a couple council members. You this, but I told you at your last council meeting that I would propose a document for discussion. It's obviously up to the council if you want to adopt something like this or come up with your own calendar that you adopt. But these are some suggestions after input from multiple staff and departments here in the county, including the Finance Office and Auditor's Office and Treasurer's Office. I just want to point out a couple of things on here. One is that there are statutory deadlines listed on here. And the plan is to beat most of those statutory deadlines significantly, in some cases by two months. One of those, for example, the date that the County Executive is required to give a budget to the council is November 1st. And I just, I don't think that's workable. And the council members I've met with, I think, would agree that you need something much sooner. So what's being proposed on here is that by September 10th, I would bring a tentative budget to you for you to, for you to accept. My recommendation would be that at either that September 10th or September 24th meeting, that the council could potentially have a public hearing then, that you make a decision about whether or not you think there will be a tax increase needed and that you make that statement. That statement is not required until October 22nd to make a statement about whether or not you're going to do a tax increase and have a truth and taxation hearing. But October 22nd, again, is really not a workable date because we really need, if we're going to do notices, we really need to know that in September. There are some dates on here, like October 1st and October 18th are absolute drop dead deadlines that if we don't do those by that date, we cannot meet the statutory deadlines of mailing truth and taxation notices. With that being said, like that October 1st and October 18th date are not, are not dates that your treasurer or your auditor would agree or even workable. They would like to know weeks before that, maybe even a month before that, if you're going to be considering a tax increase. So, so these dates on here, you'll see that some of them say they are a statutory date. Some of them say they are a hard deadline, which means we cannot go beyond those, even though we're not required by law to have it done by then. We just can't meet the statutory deadline if we went past that. And then many of them are listed as potential dates on here. The December 31st statutory deadline for the council to adopt a final budget, you could do that in November even if you wanted to. Something, though, that I think is really important to be aware of is we have to decide in September, basically, a worst-case scenario for a tax rate because we have to start moving forward with the notices. With that being said, if, if a tax rate is presented that would require a truth and taxation hearing, we have the rest of the year to finalize the budget and to change the budget to potentially make it so that that tax increase is not required. However, the notices, the chain of events really has to start in September to move toward that in order to meet the statutory deadlines. For example, October 29th is the deadline by which we have to mail truth and taxation notices. And November 1st is the deadline by which the treasurer has to mail his treasurer's tax notice. He wants to do that at least a couple of weeks before that. We should make sure the truth and taxation notice goes out the same time his does so that we don't send two and pay for two different notices. So with that being said, this is for your perusal, for your consideration. And my part of this is that I will be working with department heads and our finance department especially to get you a draft budget on September 10th. I do want to make it clear, though, that the document that you'll get on September 10th is not a final budget. And it's not going to be super close to a final budget because it's really early. And there are still several months of the year to finalize it and to get those done. But it will be enough so that you guys can consider whether or not you want to do a tax increase. The other thing that I will be working with departments on is we have already been meeting with departments and reviewing their budgets with them. We've probably met with about half the departments so far. And then we will be working with them to prepare them to come and present their budgets to you over the next couple of months. So Councilmember Goodlander presented me with the schedule that the council would like for each of those departments to come and do a workshop with you. And we'll make sure all of those departments are aware of those dates and prepared to come and present their tentative budgets by those dates over the next couple of months. Are there any questions about anything that's on here? Okay, so as I said, I'll put this into your hands now. You can, you can use it as a reference. But, but just know that these October dates especially, we want, we want to be way ahead of those dates, like in September. So, thank you for your consideration on that. With that being said, I have, I have an appointment. We have a member of our Open Space Advisory Committee, Dave Rayfield, who has notified us that he would like to step down from his role there due to some personal reasons. And that makes it so that we have an opening for that position. And I would like to present to the council for your advice and consent this evening, Kathleen Alder, to be appointed to the Cache Open Space Advisory Committee to fill the unexpired term of Dave Rayfield. So this would only be half the year, the second half of the year, because all of these, all of these terms are one-year terms. So she would just fill for the second half of this year. Kathleen Alder is actually serving as a mayor right now. She's the mayor of Providence. She's been doing that for the last couple of years. She has a master's degree in public administration. Before serving as mayor, she served on the Planning Commission for Providence City and was the chair of the Planning Commission for Providence City. She also is the current chair of the State of Utah's Land Conservation Board, which, which addresses very similar, very similar items to our COSAC. And one of the things they do at the Land Conservation Board is they administer the state's Lee Ray McAllister Fund, which is funded by the state legislature. In addition, Ms. Alder is a farmer. She has about 180 acres of farmland in Providence, Millville, and Younglord. She's the president of the Providence Blacksmith Fork Water Company. She has been involved in development. She was one of the development partners on the Macy's Project down there in Providence. And she's on the board for the Chamber of Commerce and the CMPO. She's the CMPO chair, actually, this year. So that's a little bit about her background. I think she's very highly qualified and very interested in open space. And I would present Kathleen Alder for your advice and consent at this time for the COSAC.
Are there any questions on that?
I have a question. Because she's involved with the Lee McAllister, is there a conflict of interest there?
I don't think so. I think, if anything, it's a benefit because she'll be able to be an advocate for us and help us to understand how projects can better qualify for those state funds. She, she and I did discuss that, and she wants to be an advocate for our projects at the state level.
Other questions?
Just, I haven't had a chance to attend a meeting the past month for COSAC. So, did we have the application, application posted online?
No.
Oh, okay. So this is just to fill the interim?
Yeah.
And then it'll be posted?
Or, starting in January, is when we'll appoint again. And we normally, if we're going to reappoint, we don't open it back up again. But we could, and maybe you and I could consult on whether or not that would be a good idea. I did meet with Stephen Nelson, our Development Services Director, about that topic and about whether or not we should reappoint everyone who's there or make some changes. And so I asked him to give me that feedback around that time as well. And I'd love your input if you want to keep serving, if you have suggestions about other people. And there's not a requirement for this one that we advertise or, there are some of them that statutorily require, some boards and committees that we appoint to that have statutory requirements for where we advertise, how we advertise, things like that. So this one is an internal one, though, so it doesn't have that.
Can we, can we hold off on it for two weeks?
Yeah. If you guys want to think about it?
Yeah.
I'll bring it back to you in two weeks. Yeah, if you guys want to consider that, think about it. If you want to reach out to her, we'd be happy to share her number with you. And I'll bring it back to you in a couple of weeks.
Okay. That would be, would that be acceptable?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll postpone this one definitely for, in two weeks, so.
Okay, sounds good. Next, I would like to present two appointments to the Cache County Fire District Board of Trustees. And these are actually reappointments. I would just like to reappoint David Erickson and Catherine Buse to the Cache County Fire District Board of Trustees.
Oh, I don't know.
I know, I think we need to talk about that.
Please, any, please, questions?
If someone else wants to do it, I'm sure they would let you.
I would, I would make that motion as well, that we accept Catherine Buse and David Erickson as members of the Fire Board.
A second.
Board of Trustees.
Then move a second that they accept those appointments for the Fire District. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you.
All right, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to no items, clear through. We're pretty close to 5:30. We could probably go ahead and set these public hearings. Are we close enough? Taylor? Just setting the public hearings, is it? We can wait. Let's wait. We'll wait. There's three of them right there. Well, let's go, even the public hearing, we need to wait. It's more closer to 5:30 also. Well, then let's us go to, I guess we could go to 11A. Ordinance 2024-05. Stephen, you ready? That's kind of jumping ahead for some things, but let's go ahead and dig in on that one. We hate to, actually, we probably better not do that one either because we've got to have the public hearing with it, right?
Yes, that is true.
I can do 11B.
Let's go 11B then. Stephen, I'm sorry, make you jump around like that. But let's, yeah, we better hold those and connect, you know, have that discussion and everything in connection with each other. Let's go 11B then. We're not submitting the Section 348 and 20 regarding the grant records.
Yeah, that'll be me. This one, this is ordinance 2024-06. Pretty simple. Current, current county code requires that with any grant that the county receives, a record of that grant, the contracts, any contracts governing that grant need to be kept. Separate copies need to be kept with the county executive, county auditor, county attorney, as well as the county clerk. That's kind of, that's become a little bit of, little bit of an unnecessary hassle when really all that is necessary is that a copy resides with the county clerk and the executive, the auditor, and the county attorney have access to it.
Was it ever, was it ever kept with any of them, though?
Well, I think that's what, what this, the policy that-
This clears that up, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Good.
This is kind of already what's happening with CDOC. Yeah. Is, that's the program where these contracts reside. It's really already happening now, and this just sort of makes that allowable in county code. That's the entire ordinance, that's all it does. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. What questions do you may have?
We talked about this in OMP meeting this week.
Any discussion, any ideas come up from there, or is it pretty clear?
It was pretty straightforward.
How does Bryson know that he's got all the grant documents?
I received them, and then we upload them to CDOC, most of the grant documents.
Most, we upload them to CDOC every time we get one. So we keep a physical record and that digital record. The Attorney's Office, I think, has access to all the contracts, right? Yeah. And then if someone wants one, we can easily email it to them for review. So it's really nothing new, what we've been doing in the past. Just kind of clarification about what we're doing.
Is your question more about how does, you know, he has all of the apps that have been-
Yeah. How do you know you have everything? Gets a grant, or if everybody, different department gets a grant, how do you know you're on top of all that?
It's a great question. But we have, we have tracking. Janine helps us with that as well, and so does the Finance Office. And so every time they have a grant, they let us know, and then we upload that to CDOC.
So there's money tied with it. And when there's money tied with it, it goes to, via the Finance Office? And so that would be the major alert?
Yeah.
That you better have the other, the other contracts in order.
Right.
And any of those contracts, there's a process where they have to be reviewed. Everyone has to be reviewed by the Attorney's Office. Everyone has to be signed by the executive. Everyone then has to be sent to the clerk. So the, kind of the existing process sort of protects that and ensures that happens already.
So typically with grants, there are requirements associated with those grants. Most grants are not just a free block grant. So for example, with the county attorney's office, the Violence Against Women Grant, HAVA, that, we have checkups that are quarterly, semi-annually, where we provide them numbers, and we're constantly tracking those numbers. And we're always looking at the requirements under that grant. So that's how we track that as well.
We just want to make sure there's a check and balance system that makes sure that nothing gets set aside somewhere. You're good with this, Bryson?
Yeah. I mean, it's just a process that we're already doing, so.
So the, we've talked about the grants, but also the ordinance mentions, I'm just double checking, the ordinance mentions contracts? That's, is that just going to, there's still a significant, like a follow-up process, a due process that goes with that? And so that's how we know that that will be filed as well?
Yeah.
Because grants have, where the money's tied to it, we know that it has a lot more specific steps to follow. Contracts? I'm sorry, I don't know the process that we follow, and I kind of don't know with contracts. But it has to come through your office anyway?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not like adding a burden to our office by means. If anything, we probably have to work with IT, is having a separate folder just for grants, so they don't get mixed up with the contracts, which, I don't know if ours here, it's pretty-
And arguably, the current code actually, the current code actually makes it possible there could be more confusion because it puts, it puts four different offices in charge of keeping a copy. And as we know in government, when four people are in charge of doing something, no one is in charge of doing something. So this, this has the clerk, it's going to live in the clerk's office, but the attorney, executive, and auditor must be given access to them.
And if I have another question, I'm sorry. If, it also says applications. What would an example of an application be? It says copies of applications and contracts.
Soon it's like grant applications.
Oh, okay.
Applications the county has submitted. This would be like Alma, or someone, anyone else in the county that's supplied for a grant.
So we have applications with elections, they're called HAVA. So we have, every time we have an application, what we're going to do with the HAVA grant money that we get.
Yeah, that's-
So we're simplifying the process, but allowing access to the other officials that, that should be able to see them.
Okay, I have a couple of questions.
The, I thought last year that we approved some ARPA money for a grant tracking, not grant tracking, contract tracking software. Did we ever follow through with that? Like, is this process going to make it so that if there's a contract that's about to expire and nobody catches it, is there going to be some kind of a prompt? Or is there a way to make sure that we don't miss some of those contract deadlines?
With the, like the contract, like, software, we are in the process of deciding which, which is the best route to go. The clerk's office has a system that might work already. Just be a little, we have to add more money, like, not more money to the upper lending, but add more money to our contract, or go to outside sources to get the contract. So the workflow, it's easily trackable to figure out what things are. And when it comes to checking the dates, we have a date checkup on that.
Okay. So that just, I just wanted to make sure we're not missing some of those contract details. Okay. Thanks, Bryce.
And every, every contract that we have must go through the Attorney's Office, right?
So we're the-
For review.
Yeah, so we're the end. So after it goes through the Attorney's Office and the department heads, it's filed with us. So we have an electronic copy and a physical copy.
Is there a way to look back, or do we have contracts that have not been reviewed by the Attorney's Office?
No, not that I know of, but we can do like an audit to double check. But every contract that's gone through our office has the Attorney's Secretary on it. We have like our pink sheet workflow process. And Janine's really good at making sure the attorneys see that.
Other questions? This is initial, but it depends on what you want to do with it. It's your, you can act on it or not. It's up to you guys.
Do we need to amend? I mean, I want to say the proper wording, not waive the rules, but suspend the rules. Do we have to do that?
You would on this, I guess, you want to do.
All right. I would set a motion that we amend, or suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 2024-06 and Ordinance amending Section 3.48.020 regarding grant records.
Second.
Move and seconded that we suspend the rules and pass Ordinance 2024-06 amending Section 348 and 20 regarding grant records. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. So it looks like we're probably close enough to 5:30. I'll entertain, if we go back up there to nine, A, B, and C. I would entertain motions to set those public hearings.
Mr. Chair, if I move to set the public hearings for, on, for June 25th, 2024, for the consideration of the Powder Mountain Development Agreement, as well as Ordinance 2024-08 Title 16 subdivision regulations and Resolution 2024-13 opening the 2024 budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Move and seconded, we set those public hearings for June 25th on that consideration of Powder Mountain Development Agreement, Ordinance 2024-08 Title 16 subdivision regulations, Resolution 2024-13 opening the 2024 budget. Is there any discussion? Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we're within about a minute, so I think we're probably okay. Public hearing. Let's go ahead, and Stephen, sorry to have you jump up and down, but you get your exercise today.
Okay, I sat up closer today because of that.
As we start into this, this will be the public hearing for Ordinance 2024-05 on the Quarter Inn Ventures Property Rezone. If you'd like to share some information on that, and then we'll have the public hearing right after.
Do you have nine D in your packet?
I've got it, I just brought it up. It says, actually-
I've got it on 11A. I can look at 11A, never mind.
Yeah, it says 11A, that's that portion, yeah. Right, you're fine.
I'm good.
Okay, go ahead, Stephen.
Okay, thank you. So this, this is a proposal to rezone eight acres located between Hyrum and Nibley on 4400 South and pretty close to 12th West. It's these two parcels here that are highlighted in red, owned by Quarter Inn Ventures LLC. And then maybe just to put it in kind of the grand scheme of things, as I zoom out, you kind of see where there are, this is Nibley, that kind of wraps up here, and Hyrum, that's down here. So the applicant is proposing to rezone these eight acres from, from A10 agriculture to commercial. The applicant has submitted a conditional use permit for this parcel, or these two parcels that are located on the west of these properties, essentially to open up rodeo grounds. And based on their draft proposals, they're looking at doing some overflow and other amenities to support those grounds on these other two parcels as part of the commercial aspect. The Planning Commission gave a positive recommendation. Six voted yea. Six voted yea. Our, um, everyone present voted yea on the property. With the findings of the subject property and properties to the north and east are identified on future land use map for Cache County as urban expansion overlay areas on the Nibley City, and on the Nibley City future land use map as commercial and medium to high density residential. And properties to the west are, of the subject properties are identified as industrial area on the Nibley City future land use map and as urban expansion overlay area on Cache County future land use map adopted as part of the general plan. So the planning commission generally found the location of subject properties to be rezoned is compatible with the purpose of the commercial zone. That's, I don't know, are there, there are going to be a few improvements when they do develop it. They'll have to do some improvements to forty-four hundred, um, south. And depending on the scale of their development, some other in water and septic improvements as well. Um, tho, those will be worked out through the conditional use permit process, though. Are there any questions about the applications for staff?
Well, we'll get to those here in a second after we'll, through the public hearing, if that's okay. So. Okay, we'll go ahead and let's open up the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-four oh five, Quarter Inn Ventures Property Rezone. Anyone that would like to come up and if you would, state your name and, uh, and share the information you'd like to share. Uh, if you also, I'd like to make sure you invited anyone that has come in. Please make sure that you do write your names over there in the, I guess, the little, the paper over there for registration that you've been here. So please state your name and go ahead.
All right. My name is Mary Jensen and my husband and I.
I'm Eric Johnson.
Are the owners of Quarter Inn Ventures. Um, so basically what is proposed is when you have overnight equestrian events or anything like that, a lot of those people are taking their trailers with their horses that have living quarters. And the law states that we can't have overnight parking on A-ten property. So that is really the only reason that we are rezoning to commercial is for allowing those people that are coming in long distances to be able to park and stay in their trailers overnight for these events. And it would be mostly, you know, ropings, barrel races and things like that. So that's pretty much it.
We're happy to answer any questions as well.
Yeah.
Do you offer overnight accommodations to, like during the rodeo or the fair here in the county?
We're planning on it. And that's, that's one of the things that's kind of in our phases of the whole thing. We have about four phases, is having an area on that where people that are, like overnight stays, can stay. Because we've talked to Lane Parker and he says they have to send people over to Tree Mountain to be able to stay for the rodeos. So we'll be able to accommodate the fairgrounds as well and their overflow. So.
As, as part of the development and the stages you're going through, are you looking at putting like water lines in, electrical out? You know, anything like that in?
So.
Not for the trailers, right?
Not for the trailers. It, most of them have, um, generators, you know, they'll have sewers and stuff in.
So they'll know that there's no.
There will be no dumping, no power.
Okay.
So it'll just kind of be a.
But zone commercial, then, but you could down the road, actually could develop it as needed, if, if you want to go to that expense.
Yes.
And that then would be part of the conditional use process.
There will be bathrooms and a well and everything on the other side that is going to stay A-ten. Um, and that's where all the stall barns and the arenas and everything will be. So that's where all the sewer and septic will be.
And can you make clear to me how the entrance goes into that property? It's coming off forty-four hundred, is that correct?
That is correct. There are three entrances off forty-four hundred that we were planning on.
Okay.
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 Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else that would like to come up and speak? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Second.
Move and seconded, we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, let's go ahead and we'll jump down to eleven A. And, uh, any questions that you might have, Stephen, specific on this?
Stephen, I have a question. UDOT and Hyrum City and some other organizations have been conducting studies about a southern corridor potentially realigning State Route one oh one to this road. Did the planning staff or the planning commission consider any ways to preserve right of way if in fact that realignment happens?
So not with the zone change application. They will have to do some dedication. I believe there is some dedication that is required with forty-four hundred south as part of the condition. I'd have to look at those terms, but typically during that, during the conditional use permit is when we make those requirements. There is definitely some improvements, but there's also currently a wider wide right of way than in other parts of the county too.
So that, that's a good question. Uh, so you wouldn't require any more dedication than what a typical county right of way would be?
Cur, currently, under our, currently under what the road is classified as when they come in to develop, um, if there is not adequate right of way, we'd require them to do the dedication for their half on their side in addition to that.
But if you're talking about any further, say if it's going to be a bigger road than what a county dedication would be.
That's going to turn into a state road or something like that.
Then that would be between the state and the landowners, right?
Typically. So the state ends up choosing to utilize forty-four hundred south as a future highway and need more property than what is currently available, then they would work with probably the county and the property owners in order to secure that additional right of way. Right now, as there is currently not a master plan for that, um, we, I don't believe that we would have the ability to secure additional right of way for something that we don't know for sure if that might happen.
I, I'm just wondering if there's a discussion happening about not building structures, for example, in that potential future right of way. I, I understand that we can't necessarily require the dedication of that additional right of way, but it, it just seems to me that it would maybe not be the best planning if we allowed somebody to build something somewhere where we knew there was a really good chance of a road going soon.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
State your name and then.
Yeah. So my name is Stephen Wood with Sunrise Engineering. I'm the professional engineer over this project. And it has been addressed and that was brought up during our initial comments with your county engineer and public works director, Matt Phillips. And although the county cannot require the dedication of that extra section, we are reserving that as clear space just because we do not wish to demolish in our buildings when the state route does come through. So we are preserving that corridor for the eventuality of that road. And it will be available for the state to discuss with us, to purchase it from the landowners. But we will not be developing it into any structures. It'll be utilized for extra parking or something of that nature, which is highly needed. But it won't have any structures or any pervious or negatively impacting structures or developments on it.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. I think that's wise on everybody's part. I do have another question, maybe you want to stay up for this one too. Um, it was mentioned, it was mentioned, Stephen, that there would be three accesses on forty-four hundred south. Does, does our code allow three accesses within that short of a frontage?
All three parcels. I have a plan. Um, you might want to, if you want to address, sorry, I was just looking to see if I could pull up their conditional use application real quick, but.
So one thing that was requested, again, from your public works, was that we develop a frontage road just because the future state road will be a limited access road. And although we cannot control development on either side of us, we are, we've been requested to plan for it. And so we are developing a frontage road to parallel forty-four hundred south within our property. So that in the eventuality that that road goes to get developed into the state road, we can have that frontage road connect through east and west to the neighboring properties to limit those accesses. Where it is not a limited access road right now, just to better accommodate trailers and their movement with the horse trailers, three accesses worked well and they were properly spaced for turn sighting. But we did a plan for the eventuality of them being closed and a frontage road being the primary access.
You guys are awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Stephen? Okay, um, it is initial proposal, but we'll leave that up to the desire of the council.
I'd like to say as a, as a former planning and zoning commissioner, it's nice to see a conditional use permit come in with a zoning change. So you kind of have an idea of what is being planned. And so, um, I would, because the planning commission has recommended this six to nothing in favor, I would be, I would make a motion to suspend the rules and pass this, uh, vote to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five, the Quarter Inn Ventures Property Rezone.
I'll second that.
Move and seconded that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance twenty twenty-four oh five, the Quarter Inn Ventures Property Rezone. Is there any discussion?
I just want to know, how soon do you plan on opening this if this passes?
So we can get it built.
If you build it, they will come.
Okay.
Uh, I had one, I would like, Stephen, if you could just answer one question. Uh, when, when this is rezoned to commercial, what are some of the many other uses, possible uses of this property?
That's a really good question. So the approval, and a good point to clarify is, once it's approved commercial, right now, we're currently considering a conditional use permit. But once the commercial right is given, it can, anything that's allowed as a commercial use under our code in that zone could be allowed. And I can pull up the list, but there are.
It's, it's on the, it's on the theme, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone had read those. Because it, it does have quite a wide parameter as to where we, you know, some potential things that, whether you like them or not, they do have possibility of basically, uh, doing conditional use permits for that.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, so there's a score of commercial activities. You can see it under this, the staff report under section A three, under schedule. So commercial businesses, campgrounds, kennel licenses, storage facilities, general vehicle repair, medical services, and a few others as well.
But at the same time, that was the whole reason of the study of the road is that's where commercial is going to probably be.
If we can draw it to a road that it's planned for.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
So if we change this zone, any of those kind of facilities would have to have a conditional use permit or they're just automatically allowed?
So everything within our commercial zone is listed as a conditional use. We don't have any uses that are just straight permitted under that zoning, so they'd have to go through that process.
But as said, we're only changing the zoning on eight acres rather than all three parcels, so.
But I know that area has a tendency, I won't say a tendency, but there are.
A lot of storage units popping up when other things aren't making the money.
Yep.
So, but they are options. So anyway, that's just what you would need to be aware of. And I'm sure the planning, planning zone had talked about that.
This is going to be horse storage units.
That's good. Appreciate that very much. Uh, after that, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of this pass, suspending those rules then, and pass ordinance twenty twenty-four oh five, say aye.
Aye.
Is, any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, let's talk about, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four oh seven. And I want to hear some feedback from O and P on this one.
All right, so ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh seven. So, uh, we're going to go through some quick history. In April two thousand and twenty-one, the county council passed a, an ordinance that allowed for the production of wine and wine packaging facilities in the county. It, it created a process by which entities could obtain local consent and then get a license from the state um, once they have that local consent. But they, essentially the, the counties have kind of a veto power over those applications. Later that year, code was changed. So this is, this is December of two thousand and twenty-one. Code was changed to no longer allow for wineries, but it did allow for, for beer in the county. And it's not really clear whether or not that was for single events, for restaurants, or for both. Then fast forward to just two, no, two months ago, a month and a half ago, the council passed a resolution, sorry, an ordinance that, that moved county code back to how it was in April of two thousand and twenty-one, allowing for wineries and, um, and packaging facilities in the county. Shortly thereafter, the county clerk received an application for an event in unincorporated county in which beer would be served. Um, in accordance with county code, that application was denied. However, that same applicant had applied last year and was, was, their application was approved and the event did occur in unincorporated county. So ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh seven is one that would amend county code again. But in, it would allow for event, single event permits for beer. So this would allow for events in unincorporated county in which beer is served. It would not allow for restaurants, um, nor would it allow for like a storefront in which beer is, is sold, although I, and you'd be careful with that one, but it wouldn't allow for restaurants. But so this is, this would allow for an applicant to organize an event. It's just one, a one-off event in unincorporated county in which beer is sold. Um, and again, this, this particular event that applied, um, last year was approved. And so, um, under this change, that, that event would, would again be allowed to, to be conducted in unincorporated county.
This allows for the, gives them, gives them the consent to then go and get the permit?
Correct. They still have to get, it's, it's, yes, a permit from the state.
State.
Um, I keep saying license, it's really a permit.
Yeah.
A one-time use permit from the state, but they have to obtain local consent here. Um, and this is simply the section of code that outlines the process by which local consent is obtained. Chair, I asked you about O and P. This did, this, this was approved in O and P last Friday um, by a vote of two to zero to one. I, I will let the O and P members, uh, talk about their, their thoughts on that, though, so.
I was not at meeting. I'm the chair there, so, um, Mark and Carl are there.
That's right.
Yeah, and Carl's not here, but I'd like to know what the discussion was on that. Mark?
So, uh, yeah, sure. Micah has summarized quite well the, the details of our discussion. Carl and I both agreed, and Sandy was present.
Yeah.
But since she was sitting in, was not a voting member.
Right.
And anyway, yeah, the discussion amongst the group was really that it was perceived that the code historically had permitted the, uh, I'm just looking at it, the consent authorization or the ability for us to provide local consent. And that this was something that in the change made last month to local consent, that this was omitted.
Okay.
It was just restoring what we've historically had by, uh, what was omitted by the change from last month. There was really no dissenting comments that I recall as far as, you know, the, we shouldn't restore what we've been doing as a county.
One, one thing that I would also kind of, and I think we talked about this a few months ago when we had, talked about this issue, is that, um, this is still a state issue. So the state is going to regulate. So the state is going to regulate whether or not the proper, you know, the proper safety, you know, the distance from, from a school or a church, you know, that the, the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Services, DABS, they take care of that at state level. County's really just providing its consent.
And, and from what I'm hearing, this is a year-by-year event? And they apply each year, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. My feeling is that we go ahead and do this amendment. Apparently, they were able to do it last year, but due to some kind of omission from, you know, the ordinance that was passed a couple minutes, months ago, it was taken out, and I feel like we should go ahead and pass it?
I concur.
I'd also like to say Sheriff Jensen was in that meeting, and there was no dissent from him in that meeting, so.
So just clarification, the county gives their consent, the state is watching this through the permit, and they give guidelines as to how much beer a person can have or how many? Is that true during this event?
That's my understanding.
And, and. They're responsible for the enforcement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Of, of the permit, but not the event?
Permit parameters, and so the, the availability and consumption of beer in association to the event, they are enforcing.
That's the state?
Yes. From the agency.
Yeah.
So we, we have no liability, nothing on us? It's still the state that still goes through?
I'm going to turn to the county attorney, he has my liability.
Liability. I'm just saying, all we're doing is giving consent. All liability is still the state because they're the ones that are actually issuing the permit, right?
Issues the permit, enforces the permit. The local consent is just a nod to local entities that allow them to have a part in process, but ultimately, it's in state's game and state's show.
Cool, yeah.
Okay, then I'll make, any, any other? I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and approve ordinance 2024-07, and ordinance amending section 5.08, .040 relating to local consent for single event or temporary beer event permits.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, we suspend the rules, pass ordinance 2024-07, amending, ordinance amending section 5, 8, and 40, on local consent for single event or temporary beer event permits. Is there any discussion?
Sorry, we talked a little bit about, so every time they come in with one, do we have to give our consent now? Still?
Well, no. That would go through there if it's.
Okay, with this ordinance, then it's all.
If the ordinance is passed and it's set, right.
With this ordinance, then it goes through.
Then the clerk takes care of that.
Okay, good.
The clerk, there were some standards. If you want to do that, you can do that, but.
We can change that.
The last ordinance that we, that we made a month and a half ago, just gave the clerk, clerk just reviews that they meet certain standards, and then just.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
I know, I know when the initial, the winery manufacturing, all that discussion, that went on for quite a while, and it was quite a, it's quite a discussion. And I remember we talked about beer, they talked about permits, about having different events, you know, within the county. And the cities already have their legislative ordinances that they had, that basically, again, local consent, what they do and how they work to make sure everything's permitted. We go through that same process at the fairgrounds on any, through Logan City. There, there's only one thing that just really, really concerns me, and I still want to get to the bottom of this, and I know it's a touchy subject, but I want to know how this happened, and that's bothering me to no end. And I, I, I basically, I followed everything, and for us to be fixing things like this, this really is, kind of makes me irate that these things happen and things were slid in when they shouldn't have been. But I'll, with, that's my only discussion that I'll have.
It's just created extra work for us, that's all it's done, when we thought we had taken care of it.
Things just, things were not brought to us like they were supposed to. So, anyway, but this hopefully fixes some of those things. So is there any other discussion? But if we don't address what I just talked about, we won't fix the problem totally. And that's what we got to fix. So with that in mind, with hearing no more discussion, moving second, that we will pass ordinance 2024-07, and with more, in no more discussion, all, or suspend the rules and pass ordinance 2024-07, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, it's unanimous. Okay, let's go to resolution 2024-12, approving the Cooper-Wellsville Round One space application, open space application.
So I'll give a quick presentation. Mr. Cooper is also here with us today, so if you have any questions for him, he will be available to answer those. So I can do just a quick review of what the application is, why the council's seeing this, and a, and a couple of the details about the application. So this is the open space application process, and we're currently under the first round under the county council review. This application has been through our open space committee, so COSAC, and they've reviewed and made a recommendation, and I'll go, I'll look, I'll show what they scored it and go through some of the justifications for why they made a positive recommendation. So as you might have noticed, if you looked at the application, there's three parcels listed on the application page, but only two that were listed within the report that was presented to the council. So the, the reason for that is about 20 acres is located, or 20.14 acres is located in Wellsville. Those are the acres that are currently on the screen, that are located adjacent to US 8991 and adjacent to the Wellsville Dam Park. And those parcels, the COSAC felt had this time where they could give a positive recommendation on. There's also 160 acres that's located in the Mount Sterling area that was also part of the application, that the open space committee felt wasn't quite ready to make a recommendation on, partly due to the property's unique topography. About 100, about 130 of those acres are on steep slopes, and the property, that property is also more isolated. However, the committee did, after reviewing this property, felt like it was, the section in Wellsville met the qualifications for a positive recommendation, but they're still working with the applicant for the other piece. And so the property that's in front of us, like I said, is two parcels located in Wellsville. Their request is to keep the property as an agricultural operation. They've grown alfalfa on it over the last few years. There is no registered wetlands on the property, but there is an open waterway on the property. That waterway comes from the Wellsville Canyon area, there's water in it. According to the applicant, we went and visited the site, and he said there was water in it most years year-round, and so there's continual water in it. And then also, the water is adjacent to US 8991 and to the southeast, and Wellsville Dam Park is to the northwest of the property. In this section of highway, UDOT number says there's about 20,000 average, or average daily trips that take place across this property. So COSAC's recommendation, this is something, so when the COSAC, when COSAC makes a recommendation, they have me type it down as they make the recommendation, and then they go through it to make sure that everything that they want to recommend is included in that recommendation. And so this is the recommendation from that meeting. So COSAC recommends the county council approve the Cooper-Wellsville Open Space Application to move to the second application phase. Public access was not resolved within this application, but the landowner is willing to consider. Conservation easement should not be, preclude a future trail. The council should note that the property adjacent to the north may be considered in the future, which would add additional farmland, and the property is also contiguous with Wellsville City Open Space and Parks. Just a little bit of detail, the applicant could probably speak to this more, but he's currently farming the property north under a lease, and the applicant indicated to us at the last meeting with COSAC that his plan is to try to purchase that property and then also put a conservation easement over it as well to expand that. And so these were the average scores for each review category from COSAC. And so protect scenic vistas and preserve open lands near valley gateways. Rank the highest, as this is located in Wellsville, right outside of Wellsville Canyon, and right adjacent to the highway, so has, has a large visual impact and value as people are driving into the valley. This property is also maintains, is, is used for agriculture, and so they also maintains agriculture was ranked higher. The rest of the categories, you can see, are ranked lower, and these are out of 15. And so the maintains waterways and maintains wildlife habitat were ranked lower. They're, on our site visit, we did see several species of birds around, but not to the extent that we saw like at the Furman's property. And then allows public access, the, there was some scoring on that because the applicant has indicated on the application that they're willing to consider if that's something that's important to the county. And then also, just other distinguishing factors is other wow effects essentially, or if there's anything else that this score doesn't capture, and that was ranked at 5.2. You can see the total scores by mem, by the members who voted. These are, if you added up their total scores, the total is 100. It's important to note that when they created this scoring sheet, it was not anticipated that any property would score 100 because it would be very difficult to meet every aspect of those figures, or of those criteria. But the scoring was used to help give a broad, general understanding of whether or not the property would meet those criteria. They did put in a couple of comments with the scoring, the two that, the two comments that were listed was need to see public access plan to score that category. So one or two of the members did not rank that, or just gave it a zero because the plan was not, or how it hasn't been finalized or figured out at this stage. And another person noted that this project can be an important catalyst for farmland conservation within our primary gateway entry into the valley. And so the next couple of slides are just pictures of the property. We did a site tour of it at the end of May, and so I took a few pictures that I felt kind of demonstrated what the property looked like. And this is the view of it from the highway. Are there any questions for me before? Yeah?
So, we're ranking farm ground. We said that we wouldn't, or that we did downgrade because there's no public access. And yet in the recommendation, it says conservation easement should not preclude a future trail. I'm having concerns, just like I had on Furman's, that when a person comes in for farm ground, that it's okay that we're downgrading it because there's not public access, but in here, it's saying it's not precluding a future trail. I'd like definition of that. Seems like we're weighing both sides. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. And so this, so this was a recommendation from COSAC, not necessarily by staff. There are, I think part of it was driven, UDOT has planned some trail frontage along US 8991. At this point, there is not a determination on what side of the highway that will take place. A couple of COSAC members indicated they wanted to ensure that if a conservation easement was given, and UDOT had to expand the highway for whatever reason, to add that trail facility, that the conservation easement wouldn't preclude that from taking place. Other than that, I don't know if I could speak much to the motivation of the COSAC committee for that language.
I'm just trying to be careful, I'm a landowner myself. A person comes in and says he wants to keep this as farm ground, that's his statement. And that's what we talked about, open space. And then we're saying, okay, we need public access on there, and farming in public access can happen, but yet when there's cattle and other things, I want to know what's going on on that trail. So, so we debated this last time, we rank it down because of no public access, but yet we throw this in here saying it doesn't preclude public access. I think that should be up to the landowner as to how and what he's trying to do with his farm ground because trails on farm ground, and if I have cattle and everything else, I'm concerned about the liability, what that does and everything else there. And at the same time, I'm an advocate for property rights. If he's farming and we throw a trail in there, what happened to property rights? So just some of my thinking out loud here.
So explain, can you explain, Stephen, that the, the final approval could possibly be contingent on him offering a public trail? Is that, give me an idea of what you mean.
Yeah, so because this is a grant offered by the county council, the council has wide discretion on the criteria for our conditions of offering that grant. And when you look at the bonding language, there's several things that you can consider, and trails and public access is one of the items that you could consider as part of that. However, agriculture is also another part of that, and if the applicant, and this was made very clear with the Furman application, but the applicant is not, does not desire to grant any type of public access onto the property, and the county still feels that the application itself meets the intent of the bond and feels that it's of value to the rest of the county to preserve that open space, then you don't have to make that as a condition. But if you feel like the value is diminished enough without access, then you don't necessarily have to act or grant that. So you have a lot of, the county council in this case has a lot of discretion on what to require or not to require as part of this. I mean, we, you can deny it just pretty much for any reason, really, at this point, or grant it if you feel like it meets the general terms of the bond.
Well, we heard from Mr. Furman, he didn't want the trails on there, so I think each landowner had, should have that opportunity to express that desire so the council knows what they're looking at there.
Yep. Before we, the applicant comes up, I did want to point out that I made a couple of updates to the resolution that was posted. This was an oversight by, by me. The biggest one that I wanted to point out is because the application itself had three parcels on it, but the ones that are only up for considering is two. I wanted to ensure that we listed out those parcels in the, now therefore, the county legislative body of Cache County resolves as follows. The county council approves the Cooper-Wellsville Open Space Round One application, Exhibit A containing parcels, these, the parcels listed, allowing the applicant to proceed to Round Two. I also put in, under D, whereas the Cache Open Space Advisory Committee has not made a recommendation and still is considering a recommendation for parcel 10553. The other change, and this is something that I feel like COSAC felt was important, but this is up to the county council if you'd want to consider this, is I quoted their recommendation directly in the whereas's, including the statement that public access was not concluded or considered. That is language that could remain in, that's just the COSAC's recommendation. And if you wanted to add more details in the, now therefore, considering more details of the public access based on your conversation with the applicant and what the council feels, that's something that could also be added. But I feel like the most important aspect was just to ensure what parcels we are viewing or approving for this application, since the application contained three parcels when only two are up for consideration tonight.
But a third application would very much qualify for wildlife habitat.
Yes.
But the reason it was secluded off of this is just so we can focus on these two more?
I think the COSAC committee, they haven't made a recommendation yet, they're still considering. I think the reason they did not make a recommendation at this time was due to the secluded nature of the property, and.
Which grants the wildlife habitat more?
Yes. I, I do think that is an important factor, but I also think part of it is, it's secluded to the point that it's not super visible from a lot of the county. It is visible from certain sections of the county, and so that's something they're considering of whether or not, because they, they did score it, and it scored lower in most areas. It scored. It scored much higher in wildlife preservation, but all the other areas it scored much lower. So that's why they're hesitant to make a positive recommendation.
Thus, that was my point at first. We score low on public access due to trail, but I'm glad you mentioned the council can preclude that, but I want to hear that from the landowner each time that happens. Because when they walk in and say they doing this for farming, and then they match that up with a farming group, that just seems to strengthen that that is the reason they've done that, is for farming and there is benefit because it's still open space. It's just not traversable for some people.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions you might have?
I did have a couple of questions just about what Wellsville City's like master road plan would have and, and based on the way the parcel lines are drawn, it looks like they're planning a road right of way to the north.
Yeah, so that was discussed. I'll bring up the...
Which would then kind of by default have that public access element if it was ever sidewalked.
Yeah, so if you look at the parcel viewer, you can see there's all these roadway dedications in here. So, I've reached out to Wellsville for comment on this and to follow up with them and whether or not they had an opinion about this application itself. And they have yet, they have not responded to my request at this point. They, the street dedications follow their grid patterns. As you can see, there'd probably be some issues because of the park and other access points. And so I would anticipate that if the land, property is not developed, then they would likely not develop the roadways. And so that's something that...
Well, two of them would have to cross the Wellsville Dam, so it wouldn't work so well.
Yeah, and I, so I'm assuming this was Wellsville plan to try to preserve right-of-way as property develops so they can keep their block system intact.
Right. Yeah, it would look like that they would connect to 200 East if ever they ran the road through, but if this parcel never develops, then that probably becomes abandoned as a point on their master road plan is, you know, we're just speculating, but...
That could still come up though.
It could come up.
In the next round.
Yeah. And all depends on what the property owner to the north, which you mentioned, may become something that would be a part of this. I think there's a lot of, my point really is, I think in line with Nolan's, and that is that there would be other ways for public access, meaning get the benefit of going ah, a nice open space without actually having to have public access on property.
Yeah, and...
But I think it helps that by the location. My other question is, and so I, I feel like I have the answer there, or at least I've, you've confirmed I'm understanding what I'm seeing correctly. There is currently an intersection with Highway 8991. There, I think on this map where, what you're showing, where the locale, yeah. Has UDOT weighed in at all on if that will be at some future date, a developed intersection? Knowing that they have their master plans for lighted intersections versus prohibiting additional approaches, is that a crucial...
Not, not to my understanding. I can talk to their planner. They're currently doing a review of this highway corridor right now, and I don't, that plan has not been finalized to my knowledge. And so that's something that we could, I'll follow up with our local planner. I'll probably see him tomorrow and I can talk to him about it.
And have that for the next round?
Yep.
Great, thank you. That's all for me.
Good questions. Other comments? At this point, we can, it's really not open for public hearing, but is there anyone that, anyone that would like to hear from, if there are owners of the property, that would like to hear comments from them?
The owner's here. Do you want to comment, Claire?
You don't have to if you don't want to, but it's completely up to you.
He's found a chance to speak in public, so he'll take it.
First you speak in public, then you go to church.
Only thing, I'm just a farmer, and so I like farm ground, and so if I could get this in, that'd be right to purchase more to get it into. So, that's, that's the reason I am. I just, I hate to see houses. I mean, you come out of the canyon and see 20 houses sitting there when you could have an open, pretty field. So, that's, that's all I'm after. I just want to do that.
I have told him to contact for application, and I thought this was pretty admirable. He's going to take this money and buy more farm ground and try to keep it more open space. Not many people are saying that. So, kudos to the farming side of Mr. Cooper there, so.
He's a good dude.
I will vouch for him also.
Any other, any other comments, so? Okay, let's go ahead and if you'd like to do something now, or it is initial, it's completely up to what the council...
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and propose we approve Resolution 2024-12, a resolution approving the Cooper Wellsville Round One Open Space Application.
Now, okay, before we do that, which version? You said...
Yeah, we need to...
Because his, we don't have his changes on here, do we?
Correct.
So that's what I'm worried about.
Taking the third parcel up?
Well, that's what we, you know, you described it, but we don't have, I want to make sure we're voting on what you guys want to vote on.
We don't have the blue on those.
Yep.
For the section...
At a minimum, I would recommend, because the, the resolution that was presented, this resol, this C-section is accurate, it just doesn't contain the full recommendation. But at a minimum, I would recommend that we ensure that the parcels that are being approved are listed in the resolution. So, it could be this one that I have presented in front of you. You could make an amendment to the one that was presented. If you don't want to include that other language, just add these parcels into the approval.
Okay, then we'll go back. Nolan?
Well, as I was looking, there's a definition or there has to be an understanding of what public access is. He put in here possible hunting, but it seems like each time I'm hearing this, public access is trail. So, I really want to defer to the property owner who's gone through this process as to what his hope is as far as allowing, because farmer who's putting cattle in and everything else? If that makes sense.
Yeah. Nolan, just to me, yeah.
Whatever people want.
Whatever.
You know.
Well, and I might speak to that. I mean, I, I don't see that being a place that, that maybe we would ideally want to put a trail unless like Stephen says, if UDOT comes through and has an option for a trail alongside there, then they don't have to condemn the property. We would already have a right of way if that trail were to come through, right? It would just already have that, that reserve.
The property, currently under our master plan, we don't have any trails that access through there. So, from, at least from staff's point of view, if there's public access, I, I wouldn't be opposed to it if that's what the council wanted to do necessarily. But we don't have any recommend, strong recommendation either way from a staff perspective about, about requiring public access. Because like I said, there's not an active transportation corridor that conflicts with the property.
And I feel like the, they, where it's located and what we hoped to accomplish by passing this open spaces bond, that it gets a really high mark for me.
Escape, yeah.
Yeah, the public will get a great use from being able to drive past that every time we go in and out of the valley. And so to me, the, having an actual, the ability to go on to the land isn't, that wouldn't matter as much to me because I really like where it's located.
So we're not, so it's like...
So, yeah, we haven't got, well, basically there's no, been no second on the motion, right?
I, I seconded it.
Oh, did you?
Yes.
The thing is, that is on the, the old, the version we have in front of us.
We need to amend that, but I also want to be careful of public access.
Okay, could you make those, I guess, well, we can act on the motion as such. Okay, let's go ahead and it's been moved and seconded that we pass as current Resolution Is there any discussion, more discussion?
I think we should wait until it's amended correctly.
I agree.
Well, then, then let's have an amendment.
Okay, then I would make an amendment.
I move to amend the main motion.
Okay. Is that what I do?
That's what you say.
I would like to amend the main motion to include the specific parcel numbers on that resolution. And I think we should include the, the blue paragraph that is, that it was put forth by the OSAC committee. So that would be my amendment, that as we approve this, that it includes those two amendments to the original resolution.
And I'll second that.
Move the sec...
Substitute motion, is that what this is?
No, it's moved and seconded that we amend the main motion, that we approve the current one by adding the section there that was shared with us in the blue and then the parcel numbers to the current resolution. Is there any discussion on that, that amendment?
Can I ask a question about that? It's not resolved, so it's stating in there that it's not resolved about public access. So we haven't enforced or stopped it. Okay, then I'm cool with that, so.
And, and he doesn't seem to carry the weight too, so.
He and I are going to have to go have a meltdown.
Give it to the next phase.
Any other further discussion on the amendment?
I can just state for the record, parcel numbers are 10-041-001 and 10-016-012.
Okay, which we see them up there now.
Okay.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion on that amendment? Go ahead and proceed to vote on that amendment. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is now open for discussion on the main motion as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote on suspending the rules and passing the Resolution 2024-12 as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. So it will now go on to the next phase of COSAC's vetting. So, okay, any other discussion on that? I think, I, I, man, I do, I appreciate...
To Claire, I appreciate the questions. I think it's great.
It's really good that we talk like that and talk open. Let's go to...
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Go farming. Let's go to 11E, Nautica subdivision, First Amendment.
He needs to slow down. That's his passion.
Oh, I know.
Passion. Got to love him.
I have a brief presentation. Mr. Spencer Butterfield is also here with us today, and so if there's any additional questions about the application, he may be able to answer those that I may not be able to. So this is an application to amend subdivision plat for the Nautica subdivision. So this is a first subdivision amendment. This is a little bit unusual for the council to see this, because typically the council does not see amended subdivision plats, or any subdivision plats for that matter, under current state code. The reason why this is coming before the council today is because the plat application is looking at amending roadway. And because of that amendment, our code and state code requires that the legislative body reviews and approves that amendment if, or deny, I guess, but approves that amendment if that is to be approved. And so I want to talk a little bit about this amendment and kind of the crux of it. And really what we're looking for today is because of a previous resolution and a few other factors, depending what the council wants to do, we, I would not recommend approval of it at this time, but we can get into some of those details. So the Planning Commission recommended denial of this application. The reason for that is in 2002, the county council approved a resolution saying that the county council would not take ownership, would not accept ownership of a private roadway. So essentially, if there's a private roadway, the county council said, we're not touching that. We do not want those. And so we, they passed a resolution to say that essentially. And as you can see, as part of this application, the applicant, I'm going to zoom in on this. So they supplied this road vacation and incorporating private roadway into their development. And it's a little bit easier to see on the GIS mapping. So this is the property right here. This is 1600 West, this lower section, and this is a public roadway. This 1590 West is a private roadway. They are run parallel with each other, and it's not a great design. The private roadway is in much better shape after some, I talked to our Public Works Department, Matt Phillips, and, and he indicated though, they probably still need to do some review. The 1590 West is built, was built to a county standard even though it is a private roadway. And so essentially, if the council approved this, it would allow the applicant to not have to do as much, because right now to the subdivision, they'd have to do all the improvements along 1600 West across the entire frontage of their property. If they, if we were able to swap the, or if we were able to abandon our current roadway and take on the private roadway, then they would only have, they wouldn't have to do the improvements or as much improvement along 1590 West, and would only have to do the improvements for where it ties back into this roadway across the frontage of their property to this point. So the Planning Commission, because of that resolution, recommended denial on this. After talking to Public Works, and I believe Matt has talked to a few of you, and this will came up to the roads committee, there's a general desire to fix this issue of having these two parallel roads. And the Planning Commission, they recommended denial, but after their recommendation, even though this wasn't included in the motion, they voiced, a majority of the members voiced that they would generally advise that staff and the council work on a solution to the issue, to help the property owner out and to fix our kind of confusing roadway system in this area. So staff feels that we, I would agree, and I believe Matt Phillips would agree, that this is an issue and should be resolved. However, we do not believe that what's currently in front of the council probably needs a little bit more fine tuning. For example, their current proposal is to vacate the existing roadway based off our, my discussion with Matt Phillips and what he stated that the roads committee's general recommendation is, is that the county would keep ownership of that. And so we wouldn't vacate the roadway, we'd just accept the public, or the private roadway as a county roadway and take maintenance over that section. Because essentially, they didn't want to lose the option of that property in the future. And if anybody was there at roads committee and can correct me, I'm just conveying what I was told from Mr. Phillips about this issue. The next issue is because of the recommendation for denial, the applicant did submit, we can The applicant did submit full roadway drawings and improvements, but Public Works does not feel ready to accept these without further review. And one of the reasons because of that is they wanted to know what the council wanted to do with this roadway. Our general recommendation is if the council wanted to proceed forward and try to fix this issue with the applicant to resolve this roadway and kind of combine them, is that staff could compile a new resolution. Because we don't, my recommendation would be not to undo the 2002 resolution completely because I, generally speaking, that's a good policy. We don't want to take private roads, they're not built to county standards, it could be a mess if we just start accepting them. But our resolution stating why the county council may make an exception in this one case and detail that out. And so that way, it would be clear for any future council or property owner why the council made the decision that it did. And so like I said, my recommendation is if the county council wants to consider this, it would be to continue it and allow staff some time, with giving us some guidance on how to work with the property owner and to craft a resolution to resolve this. If the county council is not interested in this, then we would just recommend that just a denial of the application would be sufficient. And then we'd work with the property owner to do the improvements along 1600.
What does the applicant want to do right at 1600? That's steeper than a...
Go on, I'll be there.
In a minute. Because, because I, I want to work with the landowner, but I don't want to step over things that we haven't considered before doing.
things that we haven't considered before doing that. But that roadway that the county owns, and, and I sat on planning and zoning when this came to happen, that we kept, because there is farm access going back through there, farmers, right?
And it's all mine. Most of it is.
Pardon?
Most of it is my ground. I use that access.
So if, if we change that, do we, do we change anybody else's access to farm ground back there?
No. I was, yeah, I was.
Well, I'm just trying to consider those, because the roads are right next to each other. It's confusing. But there's a roundabout or a turnabout down there, too, isn't there? Is that?
Below.
Yeah, so, so that is one thing that would have to be considered. There is, let's see, is there a turnaround down here? I thought they added.
I thought on the map it showed it.
It's a little bump out.
Oh, there is one right there.
Right, right, yeah.
There's one right there before you enter into the private roadway, and then.
The private is paved and then the other one is.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing that we, there is agricultural access back here, there's also a tower back here that has a little bit of driveway, yeah, right there.
Wasn't there, wasn't there ownership or some property boundary issue there as well?
So, I'm not, I don't know about that. One thing, we had a subdivision application for the property further south on this roadway, and they had, they're running, they eventually withdrew, partly because there's a limited number of developable units off this roadway, because once you reach thirty, you can't develop more. There's, I think twenty-six current units off this roadway, and so they were only able to develop four, and then they couldn't come to an agreement to get the roadway realigned. There was some concern about this curve through here, and, yep, and so I believe they couldn't come to an agreement with fixing that with the adjacent property owners. And then they also would only be able to build four units out of their, like, I don't know, it was like a hundred and twenty acres or something total. So they eventually withdrew that application, and I believe they're still kind of working in the background to bring that back in, but this would allow for an additional unit this amendment, and so essentially, down this road further, it would be only possible to do three additional building lots.
My feeling is I'd like to work with landowner, but I don't want to step on the two thousand and two agreement, and we need to work on something on that. So, sorry to tell you that this delays it, but I don't want to jump and put us in more quagmire down the road when we consider other roads, and there's, they're not going to be similar, but there's going to be times that we have to consider roads in the county that we deal with. And so my opinion is, is get Matt's opinion, because the other two roads, it's.
I agree.
Make one way and the other one way, so, I don't know, but it is steep right there, but, so it'd almost be better if the county did do that, but then how do you do it in the right manner so that we don't have issues going forward?
Yeah, I think that's our biggest concern, because I would agree in talking to Matt, he agreed also, the topography for the private road is much better than the public road. And so there are some definite advantages to taking it, but once again, there are also some issues with taking ownership of a private roadway.
But you did state that as far as we know, that private roadway was built to county standards?
That's what Matt told me this afternoon.
Okay, so that helps, but.
I think it's worth having staff try to look at it further, like you suggested.
I agree.
Sorry for the delay, but we have to be careful.
I worry, I worry if it gets killed right now, then that could be a big step back rather than let's, let's get it, let's get it worked, let's, let's make sure that.
Continue, Mike.
Yeah, let's continue what, to where we maybe find a, you know, find the best rest, uh, solution for it.
Because if we can do that road, the private road, that helps the county, and it also helps him, but let's do it in a manner that we don't create a problem for us.
Okay, with that in mind.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
On page seven, Stephen, it says, and I don't know if this is even what we're talking about tonight, or if it even matters, it says the preliminary subdivision plat does not meet the requirements for a preliminary subdivision plat, and it lists several things that are missing underneath that. I don't know if that's already been addressed by the planning commission, or your staff, or if it even matters to what we're talking about.
At this point, that hasn't been addressed. We, as, because it was just a straight recommendation for denial, because of this issue, we haven't resolved all those issues. That's partly, it's also why we haven't reviewed the roadways as much, because we wanted feedback from the council before we spent a lot of time and effort trying to resolve the issue.
Okay, that makes sense.
I think it'd be appropriate, if we could, if we postpone this.
Mm-hmm, continue.
Yeah, I want to make sure this goes through.
Postpone this for further review?
We need a motion to continue, or?
I, I think it'd be good if we did.
I'd make a motion that we continue the.
Nautica subdivision.
Nautica.
The review of the Nautica subdivision one amendment, and wish back for staff to get more information.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, that we continue this, for staff to work with the Nautica subdivision first amendment, and for possible, possible solutions, I guess. We'll go with that. Any, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you so much.
I guess, was that initial? Should we have suspended the rules on that one? Or was just continuing it? I think it's just.
That was on initial, so.
It was initial, but I think it's continuing, we're okay, because nothing was really passed of that, so we're okay. Okay, let's go ahead and, back to the other business. Any, any there that, I know you've probably got a text, I think that whatever happens, Mike, I think we can, we'll adapt. So you, you go have fun.
We can drive it in the right, just as good as you.
Don't, we'll figure it out. Don't you, don't you feel like you've got a, you know?
My driver's license is.
I gotta record it, so I can show that to my.
Yes, yeah, we, we can figure it out. We can figure it out. I know, I'll be in the Lewiston one myself, we can, we can make something happen there, vehicle or whatever it is needed. So, anyone that wants to come up there, that's the good times. So, how about, any of the others? Get your names on any of the others right now?
You put me down for the nibbly, it's so long, if personal matters permit, I will be there.
I think, I've never been to the Lewiston parade, I've put my name there instead of the Hiram one. I've done Hiram.
Well, Hiram's longer now.
I did Lewiston last year, it was fun.
Yeah, Lewiston was.
What do you want to do?
Last, last year.
I don't know.
If you need someone to go with you to Hiram, I'll go with you.
I'm getting to be selfish with my time. I want to, that's a day off, I might be gone, so, I don't know yet.
Well, I'm TBD still.
Yeah, I'm still thinking it out.
Date's on the fourth, I'm TBD as well, but.
I just want to hopefully have matching shirts.
Well.
Well, I'm not wearing that blue one again, it was too hot.
That blue one is hotter than the red, so we need to think about having a shirt. I wonder if we could go find one at the logo shop, they could get it done in time.
Sound like a drill team, anyway.
Go team, go.
I would buy the scrunchies.
Do we even have, do we even have just like cash county t-shirts?
No, those blue ones are, that's it.
Blue ones are just like, they're.
They're a hundred percent polyester vinyl hot.
Than the polyester, I don't know.
The heating core in them.
Anyway, we'll leave that up for another day, I don't think we need to talk about that. Okay, so if, what we'll do is we'll leave these on, and please just contact Micah, and within the next couple of weeks, and so we can, at the next meeting pretty, we'll have it solidified. Council member reports, let's go. Mark, start down there.
Okay, perfect. I'll recap OMP. We talked about most of the discussion there, we continue to talk about the three-digit codes for accounting, and, and working towards finalizing that, there's still more discussion to be held there. Also with the credit card policy, and there's one other that was on hold or to, on hold or to be continued.
We really, we, we had a lot of legwork already done on the credit card policy.
Yeah, there was.
Dane.
What needed to be further reviewed.
Dane Murray had jumped, had done quite a bit, I thought, jumped in on.
Yeah, so.
Maybe that was you, Taylor, that was doing it.
Dane, so, yeah, Dane did put one together.
Yeah.
Dane's didn't really, like, reflect how the process for how credit cards.
Yeah, okay.
I put one together based off of the state auditor's template.
Okay, sorry to interrupt, though.
Well, I was gonna defer to Micah to explain it, because I couldn't remember what, why it was continued, it was just listed as continued. We also talked about the thresholds for transfers from one intra-departmental transfer versus transfers out of department, or from one department to another, and so there'll be more discussion there on those recommendations. Part of the conversation was, you know, if we, I think to summarize the sentiments of the group was, you know, if we put a limit of anything under a thousand dollars can be transferred inter depart, intra-department without approval, anything other than the clerk. If you get three different requests in a three, in a quarter for nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, and then the next one, you know, how do we limit that so that it's not going beyond the true intent of, if the budget was off by a thousand dollars or more, we want to know. Wes Bingham was on the phone in the meeting, his suggestion was, well, let's just not permit transfers at all.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And so that was batted around, so there'll be more discussion about what to do there.
I just actually have a budget.
As a reminder of why the, why a threshold was being considered is, in the event that there is a, a emergency that was not, you know, say the department budgeted, this is the example that's been used, so I'll continue it, but say the department had budgeted for replacing a full set of four tires on a vehicle in the calendar year, and it turns out that they needed to do that on two vehicles, and they don't have the budget for it, but now they are without the ability to use that vehicle. If they can't transfer some funds intra-department, then they would be on the thousand dollars or any amount, they would have to come, get a budget opening before the council and get it approved before they can put tires back on that vehicle. So, anyway, there's, there may be some mitigating circumstances. The intent, though, I believe, and I'm looking around the room for other committee members to set me straight if I am way off, the idea for having some thresholds would be because if we prohibit any flexibility, then the departments would either A, inflate what they're already proposing, or B, we have to continue a miscellaneous category. I would like to see the miscellaneous category be gone, or very used sparingly, and basically not have it be miscellaneous, but tied to a, an unexpected event, and it would be based on risks that the department may face, rather than it just be a general line item for ten thousand dollars of miscellaneous. So there, there's some balancing of all the priorities that we have talked about as council, et cetera, and then expediency for the county departments to be able to get the work done. So that's what's being discussed in the roundtable. I think that's it from OMP. Micah, is there anything I forgot that you were, like, we gotta make sure we mention? Oh, yeah, and I, I didn't second Carl's motion on the encroachment fee waiver for the high-speed internet installment, so that didn't, that failed to receive a recommendation from OMP. The other thing I wanted to report on was just a, an activity that members of the county's CEO board participated in, as well as Sean Millen from the economic development. We were tagged along with the forty-seven G tours that they had arranged last Friday, where we went and visited several educational institutions in the valley, as well as other entities, so like Utah State, we met with the president there, as well as leadership from Bridgeland Technology College, and another, you know, we went to each of these sites. In addition, we also toured the Aspire facility, just getting an idea of what, a full-picture understanding of what forty-seven G's interests are in supporting the economy of Cache Valley, particularly the aerospace and defense. And so we visited the engineering, we toured the engineering, some of the engineering department with their faculty there, and just looking at different things that Utah State is involved in. Also discussed programming that Bridgeland High Technology College has that's relevant to workforce that would support, you know, these, these jobs as a academic number thrown out there, for every engineer behind a good idea, you've got to have, you know, the supporting staff in an organization to make things happen, so for one engineer, you've got to have so many operators and, and, you know, administrative staff, and then seven to ten line members to make things work. So the idea of a broad workforce. I will note that it was also thrown around just naturally in conversation that with the current ecosystem that Cache County has of a, of, you know, at the forefront of technology, space, aerospace, et cetera, with SDL and other entities, how also our economy is so robust with agriculture, and how our society and our community has melded the two together. Not to say that farming and agriculture isn't high-tech, because reality is, when the tractor was invented, that was high-tech, moving from, you know, oxen and plow to a motorized vehicle to perform the work. It's just Cache Valley is well-positioned to be, continue to be an economic leader in multiple facets, facets, but, you know, with Utah State's involvement in the engineering and in the ag and in the aerospace, forty-seven G is very interested in our community, and Sandy and I, while they're able to participate, grateful for that opportunity, just to meet with local entities.
I just have a fast question. Because our next OMP meeting is the day after a holiday, did we move that?
Uh.
Because the fifth is, the first, first, first Friday is the fifth, did we consider moving that meeting?
We did not, we had a discussion, but. Would you like favor of? Would that back a week?
Yeah, to the twelfth.
The next week would work far better for me.
Yeah, I'm, me also, so the twelfth, okay, thank you.
Okay, Nolan.
Thanks, Mark, for the discussion on the intra-department movements. I served on the budget committee. I am very strongly in support of having an amount and no transfers, just freely, because it takes away the budgeting understanding, and that's why we're doing the code, so I stand for that thousand, as I've worked with that before. Two other things, there's some citizens that have contacted me in the south part of the county. In two thousand and fourteen, we put a bridge over the Little Bear River that has virtually stopped all farming operations to being able to go across that bridge, because it's only, what is it? I had the chief go out and look, and he's got some concerns also, from the fire department of safety on that.
On the way to Minnan?
Nope.
Further out, okay.
On the Little Bear River. The bridge was put in, I think, around two thousand and fourteen. It's a one-way bridge. No farmer can get a piece of equipment across there, and so, and it's, and the chief went and looked at it, and there's some safety issues on the bridge and the road, or do you want to explain that?
Yeah, the road from the highway to the west side of the bridge is too narrow for two inches to pass, and in the wintertime, it's, it'd be a huge problem, water tenders couldn't get down in there.
And we have, what, seven houses across the bridge?
Yeah.
Is that the entryway up to Avon?
No, this, you're on the way, Avon, and just take, it's called the West Canyon Road, and you take the West Canyon Road down, and you cross the Little Bear, and we put a bridge in there, but for some reason, we shrunk that thing and we just.
We, we shrunk it, do they also have high walls on it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what also, same thing happened out in Newton, where they, when they came in, they redid. Yeah, that's what also, same thing happened out in Newton where they, when they came in, they redid the bridge, when they did, they went higher with the walls.
Well, and that's the problem.
The width of the equipment can't now get through the width of the wall or the height of the walls.
The guardrails are so high, they can't get anything across, it, it's a one-way lane, it stops, and so there's some issues that we need to address on that, help those citizens in that area, so just wanted to bring that to light, cause we do need to discuss that. Also, um, as Mark talked about a tour, this coming Monday, there is gonna be about thirty people, it's called the Ag PAC Tour, we're gonna have ten representatives, state representatives and four Utah senators up here along with, um, a ton of people in the agricultural department, we're gonna have the Utah Farm Bureau. Um, we're gonna have Mr. Craig Butters up here, um, and they're all, they're gonna be up here touring ag-related stuff and then also, um, farmers can apply for a loan for help on irrigation equipment, I have applied for that, so they're gonna come see my operation. And so they're just seeing some of those things, they're gonna be visiting Gosner's, um, and a few other things out here, so that will be quite the state group coming up here to see some things in Cache County.
What day was that?
Monday, the seventeenth.
What time?
Gosh, it's gonna be all day, um. I can forward you all the email on it, Representative Chris Wilson will be there, um, no, Senator Chris Wilson, excuse me, and then Mike Peterson, Doug Owens. Bunch of people there, a bunch of people from the ag department, um. Right, they'd love to have council participation in there, they're gonna have a meal at, um, Cascount, at Wellsville, that's gonna be brought in for all of them to be there, so, um, they invited me, cause they're coming to my property for where I'm doing the irrigation improvement, so, um, but it is here to help understand what state money is doing in our county and farming and, and all those applications, so.
If we were to join in the middle of the day, say at noon, where's the best place to go out, your place?
It would be, they would be just coming back from Gosner's and they'll be meeting at Wellsville, so I can get to the itinerary.
That'd be great.
Uh, yeah, for instance, um, well, like I say, we got ten representative, state representatives, uh, four or five senators, their wives may come. Wade Garrett, Vice President of Strategic Relations for the Utah Farm Bureau, Spencer Gibbons, CEO of Utah Farm Bureau, Val J. Rigby, who is a local resident, President of Utah Farm Bureau. Bunch of people from there, then we have what's called UDAS, UDAS Department of Agricultural Funding and Stuff. Amber Brown, Kelly Pearson, Anna Fries, Craig Butters with them, Dave Davis, Utah Retailers Association, so. A bunch of people who have some say-so in what comes as far as funding for areas here too.
Terrific. Anything else?
Not for me.
Catherine?
Um, last Thursday, we met with, um, some of the interested parties and local elected officials that have been driving the, the rec center and with, uh, Stephen Nelson and the now, all of the process and Stephen, you're welcome to jump in, all the process has now been handed off to Stephen and then Stephen and his department will draft the RFP for the, the feasibility study for the rec center. Then he will return to the technical committee, which is not all of the, the, the people that initially have been involved, it's a more those that have a little more expertise with, with drafting the RFP or have had some experience with that, for them to fine-tune the scope that's defined in that and before it is actually, uh, published, right? So just that's the update of, of where we are on, on that and, and the progress of that and, and the timeframe that you gave Stephen for that, uh, would you remind me was?
So we, five?
Couple weeks.
Weeks, so we have five months overall, if we need to ask for additional funds. Um, but we're planning to do our first meeting with that kind of more technical committee on Friday to, I've started to, I have a draft of the scope put together and we're gonna, I'm gonna be putting together a few other items that we'd include in the RFP, but this will include the recreation directors throughout the county and other cities who have shown interest in participating in this process have been invited. Um, and some of them have told me that they can't make it or whatever, but they're wanting to provide some input, so I'm planning to send that scope out to everybody who wants to see it from these different cities. Then after that's done, the different mayors that have been involved have asked to review the scope before we send it out, so I'm planning to try to get some broad feedback and how we pursue the.
Well, and I wanna thank you, I know this kinda got dropped in your lap and it was, your name or your department was kinda put on this and it was kind of a roundabout way, but thank you for picking up and running with it, you've done really well and, and thanks for all you've committed to doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen, what was the name of that committee that you're going to meet with that wants to be involved in it?
So, I don't know, we're calling ourselves like the Technical Committee.
Those that are drafting the RFP.
Yeah, essentially, we're trying to look at the different recreation leaders within the county. Some of them are full-time employees, we've also invited council members or other part-time staff that oversee rec programs, um.
And you said, um, other rec center directors?
Or recreation directors, so like Nibley, Logan, Smithfield, Hyde Park have, or North Logan, excuse me, have full-time recreation staff. And then several of the other smaller cities like Providence, or maybe not, maybe not smaller, but several other cities have part-time staff that have looked at helping and participating as well as Providence City Manager has participated in the construction of a rec center and he's indicated willingness to help with the RFP, so we're working with him as well and, um, yeah.
And they meet Friday at eleven?
Yep, that's the plan.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
That's all, thanks.
Nope, that's it, other than, like I said, I had a potential wanting to, um, submit an RFP and I didn't know where to go to tell him to go, but now I know what you.
Please feel free, you can give it on my cellphone.
What is that?
Um, four, three, five, seven, two, oh.
You want that in a public meeting?
It's on my email, this is correct.
Oh, okay.
Three, five, four, three.
Thank you, Stephen.
Okay, um, yeah, I also really enjoyed that tour on Friday. And Mark gave a really good overview, but one of the things that they, I remembered them saying is that as far as the um, technical aerospace engineering type business that Cache Valley really punches above its weight for the state of Utah, that we've really got a lot going on. When you see the technology they're developing at Utah State, it's pretty amazing. So I think that, um, one of the things they did talk about with us too, that one of them mentioned, say, they just asked us as elected officials that were on the tour, what, what would you consider your brand, what is the brand of Cache Valley? And that made me really stop and think and that's something to think, we as a council should give some thought to, you know, the, like Mark said, they talked about the agriculture obviously is a big part of it, but how do we meld that with technology and make it seem like it reflects what we are? And so anyway, I thought that was really interesting, um, the, there, we are in the process of hiring a new executive director for BRAG. The, the application process is open until next Monday and that's kind of a big, gonna be a huge project, trying to put together the process to, to look at applications and, and interview and hire people and so that's a, a really big, um, big thing that's going on, anybody that wants to be involved, um, there are, um, Mar, or Carl and I are both on the executive or the, uh, gosh, I can't even think, the general board for BRAG, so we are on their general board of directors. But, um, if anybody, so you couldn't be involved in the interview process, there is an interview committee, but if anyone has any input to me as we look for that director, I would appreciate your input. And, um, the third thing, um, right before this meeting, Nolan and I met with the executive to talk about a few things that are going on. I won't go into a lot of those details, I'll just write up a little summary and send it to you guys, but, um, some interesting things that we talked about and the, the, um, budget calendar that he handed out just before the, um, just before the meeting started. We had asked him to include the workshops that we wanna have from each of the departments. And so while the meeting was going on, Dirk added those, so I'm gonna pass those to you, if you'll look on the back. And as an appropriations committee, we had talked about, um, if you'll look on there, any of those departments that are set to come and give a workshop to the council. If you are a liaison with one of those departments, will you please make sure that you are familiar with their budget, have you spoken to them about some of those things before they come and give a workshop to the council? And that's gonna put a lot of workshops on our plate in July and August, but if we want to hear, like last year, we asked all departments to come and talk to us and a few didn't. So this year, we're giving assignments that we'd like to hear from, um, as many of them as possible before. And then if you go back to what the executive said, he plans to have a tentative budget to us by September tenth. And that was a date that I had talked to the treasurer, Craig, and councillor about, that he would like that. That would kinda be the date he would like us to make a decision whether we need to hold some truth in taxation or whether, what, what we're gonna do as far as asking, if we decide we need to ask for a tax increase, we need to kinda look at September tenth as a, as a goal to, to have enough information to try and make that determination. So, anyway, so hang on to that new calendar and look at where, what workshops we're gonna be looking for in July and August. And I think that's, that's it for me.
Can I make a simple comment on this?
Yes.
Should've mentioned this in our meeting with the executives, we actually already have a workshop scheduled for July ninth.
Oh, do we? Okay.
With Development Services and Commission. So, we need to make a decision about what, and I can talk to Dirk tomorrow about that.
Yeah, are there maybe some offices that we don't feel strongly about hearing from or, you know, that we could move or, um, if everyone will just look at that and we're just kinda trying to refine this budget process and I am the first one to admit that last year was my first budget, public budget process, so any input is, yes.
This is just an idea that just came to my mind, as the liaison with each of these.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, do, do some of us, some of these feel like we would be fine just meeting with them and, and if any of their fellow council members have questions, they talk to us? Or do we wanna have them present to the whole council?
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally open to that, um, I'm just not, like I said, last year was my first.
Yeah, me too, I don't know.
Experience and so.
Anybody that's more seasoned?
I made, I made this up.
I mean, some of us, I'm, and you know, some of these have really big budgets, we might wanna have the entire council present, and some of these have pretty designate, like I would say, like, for instance, Victim Services, theirs, I think have pretty designated funds for, for what they're going to and and as their advocate, I could probably meet with them and, and, but you guys, tell me what you guys think of them.
Firstly, I'd like to hear them all.
You wanna hear them all?
Just so I, I think it helps us understanding their budgets and.
Even if it's a short presentation, maybe, I'd like that.
I mean, that's my summer, right there, we're talking, so.
Yeah.
But, um, it's an important part of this process too.
Anyway, that we have an appropriations meeting on the eighteenth of June and we can kinda finalize this calendar and, and bring it to you guys then to be adopted on the twenty-fourth when we meet, so if, if you, I'll just look at that and think about that process, especially those of you who have experience in budgeting. And if we need to change it, we sure can, um, just trying to make sure I could get a wrap up my head around it and so that was, that was kinda where that came from, so, open, open to any suggestions.
Omit?
Well, I, I'm embarrassed to admit, so it's, it's, I'm not on this subject, but I did have something else to add in my report, I should've included, so if you're ready to move to that, I can.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, uh, take it as a compliment, Bryson, you're doing such a great job with the election, I totally spaced mentioning the way ballots are out and the Republican primary. And my perception is things are going so well that I even forgot to mention it as a department report, I apologize, is there anything you would like to add?
We're currently processing ballots, so if you guys wanna stop by, feel free to, so, we're at ballot center, what, ten to five, basically. Feel free to stop by and see how the process is going, and good news too, my office has been pretty quiet too, our phones have been really quiet, so that takes note saying we're doing pretty good too, so, yeah, have any questions?
Yep.
If you're ready to ask, can we?
Thank you.
Appreciate it, apologize for forgetting and tell your team, thank you.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, almost been an out-of-sight, out-of-mind experience, which is refreshing.
Okay, I know, I know, as, when you look at the budget adoption calendar, we had one of these several, several years ago. And it was all, and it's one that actually we adopted, it had it all sequenced out, it was a little more aggressive even than this one. Uh, but, so this isn't really anything new. And, uh, so I don't think we need to tout it that it's, you know, that it's, is, is really something new, but I think it's, it's something that we've had to kind of, like, Sandy said, you know, I'm glad we're getting it back on paper, uh, because we did have one that actually was adopted.
Okay.
But was not adhered to.
Right.
And, uh, so, uh, so this here, to adopt this new one and that, I, I think it would be very good for us to compare it to one of the old, one of the older ones and make sure that, you know, that we're not missing something. Uh, I know for, we used to, one of the first things we had very, actually quite earlier in the year was making sure that the, like, insurance adjustments for the employees and all that, make sure that came in first to see where we were gonna be on any kind of adjustment from there. And then, then we start filling in from there, so, anyway, we can compare those and I, but I think it's, I'm glad that we have something that, you know, that we adhere to, uh, these deadlines, like Mr. Zuck said, these deadlines are because, so that we can save money, you know, that we can get it done, but we don't have to have two mailings out.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
You know, cause it's thousands and thousands of dollars that we can save if we can do it in one, one mailing and if we can get ahead on those kind of things, so. Did you have a comment, Nolan?
Yeah, as we're talking about these workshops and that, and I don't know how many of you met with Wes, Catherine just brought it up, brought it to my mind, but it would almost be interesting to have Wes attend one or two of those and get, cause I think the presentation of the budget to the council in what we read would be helpful and he's looking at that, for those of you who have met with Wes. And with our new auditor out there who's being very, very quiet, so. Maybe if he and them attended and we said, hey, this would help, because I remember we talked about last year budget when a department gets revenue coming in, but it doesn't show at the same place as an expenditure, and I talked to Wes, why can't we bring that there, so we know that revenue is offsetting that?
Yeah.
And he's like, yeah, that'd be a good point, if you guys would maybe meet, maybe that might be something we consider, I don't know if Matt, you got any input on that or what?
Uh, I'd love to visit with Wes about it, I think that's where you're at.
So, something to think about, it might.
That's great.
Yeah.
Might be something that he presents or gets an idea of what we'd like to see, so we understand the budget better.
Appreciate that, other than that, I don't have any other, uh, you know, any input from things, uh. Okay, well, with that, then I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Catherine it?
All the papers say aye?
Aye.